We want to call to order the September 27th, 2022 regularly scheduled meeting for the Richland 2 Board of Trustees. We have Ms. McFadden joining us via phone. If I can please have a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to go to executive session for the purpose of student appeals, breach of contract. Second.
Motion made by Dr. Holmes. Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll all take the vote. I assume everyone's logged in. Seven, we will now convene into executive session. We're going to reconvene the September 27th, 2022 regularly scheduled board meeting for the Richland 2 Board of Trustees. We've just returned from executive session where we discussed the items that were made and the motion to go into executive session. If I can please have a motion to end that executive session now.
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Holmes.
I make a motion that we end the executive session at 5:49 PM.
Motion made by Dr. Holmes. Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll take the vote.
Dr. Holmes, can you repeat the time?
5:49.
up. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to the inspirational moment, Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I would like to recognize Ms. Maria Owens, our Director of Strategic Partnerships, who will introduce tonight's inspirational moment and the presenters.
Thank you Chairman Manning, Dr. Davis, Board. Thank you for having us here. It is with great joy tonight that I'm introducing some very special people to you. I think you all know that we have numerous partnerships with MUSC of the Midlands. And tonight, we have Ms. Jill Anelli, who's Director of HR for MUSC Midlands, who's with us. We also have one of our very own, Ms. Wendy Doshi is the instructor. And they are here to talk to us tonight about an incredible program that's been going on in Richland 2 for almost five years now. It's called Project Search. Ms. Doshi.
Good evening. Richland 2 Board, Dr. Davis, thank you for inviting Project Search to be the inspirational moment for this meeting. Project Search is an internship-based employment training program for students with disabilities in Richland 2. Our interns range from ages 18 to 21 and attend Project Search after completing four years of high school. Interns spend one year in the program where they learn a multitude of skills needed to pursue gainful competitive employment in our community. MUSC Health Columbia Medical Center has graciously hosted Project Search for five years and continues to be our partner. They will usher in the fifth graduating class in June. In 2021, we expanded the program across two hospitals in the Columbia Medical Center and have increased our cohort size every year since its establishment in 2018. Please take a moment to watch our video that shows some of the amazing things our interns are doing. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diane Owens. I am the South Carolina statewide coordinator for Project Search. I've had the pleasure of visiting the MUSC of the Midlands site three times now. This site has proven to be a model for the state and the outcomes they've achieved working with people with a wide variety of disabilities is the reason. Project Search at MUSC of the Midlands offers students opportunities to learn tasks and not to just get a job, but actually start a career. This program focuses on individual strengths and builds on those strengths. The opportunities the interns will receive are endless. They will be immersed into a work environment and learn skills that will transfer to many aspects of their lives. Families will be connected to a great amount of resources to make the transition process as smooth as possible. In only one year, I've seen such amazing success stories of interns that were able to experience Project Search at MUSC of the Midlands.
Good evening. I'm Jill Anelli, the HR Leader for the Midlands Division of MUSC Health. I'm also one of the founding leaders of the Project Search Program for the Northeast Campus. Project Search started five years ago at the Northeast Campus and the goal of preparing our students with disabilities to work and live independently. Securing employment can be a challenge for any young adult, and it can be even harder for those with disabilities. MUSC Northeast provides on-the-job learning opportunities for the young adults with disabilities from yours, Richland 2 School District. Richland 2 instructors, coordinators, and administrators help make this program successful. Wendy Doshi, Sharon Taylor, Stephen Cross, Maria Owens, and other partners from ABLE and the Department of Disabilities. This resilient group weathered the storm of COVID and our acquisition from Providence Health to MUSC in August of '21, each year bringing our new interns for the opportunity to learn and grow. Our hospital internal departments have also been a tremendous supporter of teaching these transferable skills. Areas such as sterile processing, supply chain, food and nutrition, housekeeping, post-op, med-surg nursing floor, emergency room have opened their doors to teaching the interns how to be their best every day. Some soft skills such as coming to work on time, staying on task, asking for help when needed are all part of the learning experience. Over the past couple of years, the program expanded to the downtown campus and allowed the interns to expand their territory, learning how to commute on the city bus system and navigate a larger hospital building. During the first graduation ceremony, students held cards describing how they felt before the program and then after the completion. Cards changed from unsure and shy to brave and confident. It is a blessing to be able to see the individuals who may have felt like someone who needed additional care become someone helping take care of others. They transform into young professionals here. Our goal for this year is to start a business advisory council. The council will be made of community organizations that have a heart to offer a hand up. The role of the council members will be to provide information to help us determine what skillsets will be needed in the community and in their industries, to connect our interns through mock interviews and email mentoring programs, network with other employers, provide tours and job shadowing in their organizations, and attend our quarterly meetings. We will be hosting an information session on October 13th at 4:30 in our Northeast Campus classroom. Maria Owens has a link to share if anyone is interested to register for the event. She went ahead and shared with your business community, and already this afternoon, two organizations have expressed interest, and we find that to be very successful. At the end of our school year, our main success will be gainful employment for each intern. Thank you again for the opportunity to share with the district an update on Project Search.
Thank you very much. Board members, questions, comments? Dr. Holmes.
I just want to say, I was a special ed teacher for 17 years, so this project is very near and dear to my heart. I'm so glad to see our students that have special needs have an opportunity to be gainfully employed. I am there if you need me to help because, like I said, I taught special ed for 17 years, and I love the kids, and I think it's important that they be able to be able to take care of themselves. So, thank you, thank you, thank you for this particular program. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I had an opportunity to visit before COVID, the program, and it was really amazing to watch the young folks working in the facility and carrying out their duties on their own. So, to hear that the confidence builder piece of it, that's really amazing. So, thank you all very much for the work you're doing. Thank you. All right, I will now move on to approval of the agenda. If I can have a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Wow. Thank you. I saw Will back there making handball. You practiced that, right, Will, when you were directing traffic in the mornings? So, now we will move on to approval of the agenda. If I can have a motion, please.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
Move to approve the agenda for the September 28th, 2022 regular board meeting.
Motion made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
Thank you. Periodically, I like to share with the public why I do not vote to support our board agenda. This practice was adopted a few years ago where we do item 13.1, where we approve a draft agenda, and that is not necessary. We've been told repeatedly that we're done so. It's done in the process so that the board has the opportunity to get things added to the agenda. But for example for this evening, things that were added to the agenda, item 10.1, proposal for the February 14th meeting, and item 11.1, the safety update, the things that the board did vote to support that were removed from the agenda were policy BK, policy BID, and a food service update. So, I find it to be an unnecessary exercise in practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Mr. Chair, just for the record, please let the record show that we cannot conduct a meeting if the agenda is not approved. So, I'm fortunate, I'm glad to know that for the majority of the time, it is approved. We cannot hold a business meeting if the agenda is not approved, so it is necessary.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I'm making reference to the draft agenda. It needs to be removed from this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? With that, we'll take the vote. Motion passes four yes, three no. All right, we'll now move on to special recognitions. Dr. Davis, or Ms. Ruth.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Ms. Libra Ruth will come forth to provide special recognitions for tonight's board meeting.
What I'm presenting tonight, or helping lead present tonight, is our annual recognitions, a tradition that was started last year by the chair at the time, Dr. Holmes. We have plaques recognizing our board officers whose terms ended at the end of June. We always seem to get behind and delayed in presenting these plaques, so we do apologize. It just always seems like something comes up in August when we should do it. So, tonight, I would like to ask Dr. Davis to come forward and be the official presenter of the plaques with Dr. Holmes, Ms. Mackey, and Mr. Manning. If you can come stand in the middle, and Ms. Christine Lewis is going to take pictures for me.
Hold on, I need a card in here.
So, Dr. Davis will first present the chairman plaque. This is a plaque that we've been giving, gosh, so many years, long before I came, but definitely since I've came. It is a gavel with their year of service as the board chair. It is not the gavel that we use at the meetings, so, but Ms. Lewis has noted to us that we probably do need to invest in a new gavel because the one we do continue to use at meetings is starting to wear out on us. The next one is our vice chair plaque, and that goes to Mr. Manning, who served as vice chair from July 2021 to June 30 of 2022. And then Ms. Mackey served as our secretary for that period as well. As you all may remember, we, the board elects their officers from June, the last meeting in June for the July to June time period. And while they're getting one great photo, I'll encourage, ask everyone to join me in thanking them for their service as officers last year. Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Manning.
We will now move on to approval of the consent agenda. If I can have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
Move to approve the consent agenda for the September 27th, 2022 regular board meeting.
Motion made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
We had a constituent send in a concern about the boarding on the approval for the board minutes. I've got a concern about how it was addressed. I mean, was it addressed appropriately so that we can approve the minutes?
Ms. Agostini, are you asking to pull the minutes?
Yeah, go ahead and pull the minutes, please.
Okay, so, we will pull the minutes. Are there any other items anybody wants to pull or any other discussion around the consent agenda? All right, with that, we will vote on the consent agenda minus the minutes. Did I get, I'm sorry, I do need a motion.
Well, I move to pull the minutes from, and break up the consent agenda, but it doesn't need a second.
No, no, it's a motion to approve the consent agenda itself without the minutes.
I thought they did.
Didn't we do it? Ms. Mackey, you did it, and, no, no, I'm sorry, I need to back up. You made the motion, Dr. Holmes seconded, then we had the discussion.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought, all right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, the consent agenda is, so, we removed the minutes from the consent agenda, so we're voting on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Okay, but that's not what that says. I just want to make sure that we're okay to vote on this.
The way I understand it, we're fine because we're still voting on the remainder of the consent agenda.
Okay.
And so, the minutes are pulled out in a separate item.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Well, the consent agenda, still the consent agenda, just doesn't have the minutes in it any longer. I mean, Christine, can you just say minus the board minutes so that there's a lap, so that it clears up any confusion? Well, yeah, we'll have to. I understand, I'm just, technically, it doesn't have to say it, but if that will give comfort to the board, then we can amend it so that it's very clear to everyone. Okay. Is everyone clear now? We'll now move on to the minutes. If I can have someone please make a motion. If I can please have a motion for the minutes. I'm going to ask again, can I please have a motion to approve the minutes? It can be approved with a recommendation for a change, it can be approved as is, but I need some kind of motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the minutes, assuming that whatever concern there is will be addressed in discussion as opposed to making a motion.
Okay, so, you made a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? All right, with no discussion, we'll take the vote. Next, we'll move on to the public participation. At this time, I have Ms. Cabrina Bass.
I'm the Executive Director of Midlands Mediation Center located in Columbia, South Carolina, one of two community mediation centers located in the state. We are there to help people resolve their conflict, improve relationship, and strengthen our communities. One member of my staff heard that you all were talking about mediation and conflict resolution and made the recommendation that I show up today to introduce our services. We have been in business since 1998, serving the greater Columbia area as well as Richland County and 11 other counties across the state, helping families through their divorces, parent separation, and things of that nature. But we do believe that conflict is natural, that's something that is inevitable, and we provide training services to organization, businesses, and individuals to help them resolve those conflicts. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer those questions, but just wanted you to know that we are here functioning and working within the county. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bass. If I can have Mr. Gare again, please come forward.
Thank you for letting me speak again tonight. I think you're doing a great job. I really do. I think all of y'all are doing the best job you can. I said you can. I mean, resolution to conflict has to be communicated between people. You can't just go off and send a letter stating that somebody's doing something wrong without communicating and find out who actually did it wrong. And you can't police what's going wrong when one of your own board members is violating the same principle and rule that you have. You have to police it amongst yourselves, guys. You have to do what's right, and you know what? When you're all, when you're all doing what you're doing, you know, nobody's going to believe anything you got to say. So, think about it, what you're doing, and by the way, everybody's watching, the kids are watching. 297 people watched the board meeting last time, watched you do whatever you do, but you don't seem to care. By the way, security, it was great this morning at Blathwood High School. You had the line all the way to the stadium backed up. Isn't that a great thing? Kids missed their first class because of that. And by the way, there were four or five people that I know personally that walked through the metal detector with their phone and their car keys and their dental hygienist tools that they take class with. Well, that's great. So, that's not helping anything. And where is the security proposal that Dr. Davis gave to Chairman Manning? Why haven't the public seen it yet? You know what? That's transparency for you, isn't it? You had to know transparency. And by the way, conclude means end. Just exactly what you voted for, to end Dr. Davis's contract last week, or two weeks ago.
Thank you very much. Joe Trout, please come forward.
Good evening, trustees and superintendent. I'm grateful for the opportunity, happy to spend just a few minutes addressing you. I would like to make a suggestion. I know that we all can agree that we want our schools to be safer and we want a good learning environment, and we talk about a lot of things we can do, but one thing I would really like to encourage the public to do is to look into substitute teaching. Substitute teaching, there's a lot of vacancies. You don't have to be a teacher to sub, but being in the schools and being a substitute brings certainly order to the classrooms, it brings discipline, it's a very good thing. I checked a little bit ago, and it is 171 job openings this afternoon for the next week or so, and that's a lot of vacancies, that's a lot of classrooms that may or may not have someone in them. And I can speak from experience, just a small amount of subbing I've done is these children need people in the classroom. If you've got adults in the classrooms, it certainly helps with discipline, and, you know, the children are going to be a lot better behaved when there's adults there. Substitutes make between $12, I think, $16. And where is the security proposal that Dr. Davis gave to...gave to Chairman Manning? Why haven't the public seen it yet? You know what? That's transparency for you, isn't it? You didn't know transparency? And by the way, conclude means end. Just exactly what you voted for, to end Dr. Davis's contract last week, or two weeks ago.
Thank you very much. Joe Trout, please come forward.
Good evening, trustees and superintendent. I'm grateful for the opportunity to have you spend just a few minutes addressing you. I would...I would like to make a suggestion. I know that we all can agree that we want our schools to be safer and we want a good learning environment, and we talk about a lot of things we can do, but one thing I would really like to encourage the public to do is to look into substitute teaching. Substitute teaching, there's a lot of vacancies. You don't have to be a teacher to sub, but being in the schools and being a substitute brings certainly order to the classrooms, it brings discipline, it's a very good thing. I checked a little bit ago and it is 171 job openings this afternoon for the next week or so, and that's a lot of vacancies, that's a lot of classrooms that may or may not have someone in them. And I can speak from experience, as just a small amount of subbing I've done, is these children need people in the classroom. If you've got adults in the classrooms, it certainly helps with discipline and, you know, the children are gonna be a lot better behaved when there's adults there. Substitutes make between twelve, I think, sixteen dollars an hour, depending on your educational experience, but it is a real good opportunity. I would encourage the public to...if you're retired, if you have the time, you can, one or two days a month, well, really, two or three days a month, you should be able to sub to do the amount that you need to, but it's a great opportunity to be in the schools and help with the situation we have with shortages in teachers and adults in the buildings. I just want to share that with you all, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Richard Watkins?
Dr. Davis, how you doing? Board Members, how you doing? Keep it simple, I'm just here to talk about the situation that I've been going through. Y'all finally get to put a face to the emails and phone calls. On August 31st, my daughter was involved in an altercation with another student at the school at Mother Road. My daughter informed the teacher, another student was talking about it, wanted to fight. Teacher shrunk her shoulders, her shoulders, and laughed at her, said she don't care. Another student tried to separate them from arguing. Teacher goes in between them and separates the student who actually tried to de-escalate the situation. The teacher then clears the locker room, leaves student unattended, unsupervised. Students left in there, unattended, and left to fight for four to five minutes. Teacher finally returns without stepping in. One student was removed, taken to the nurse. My daughter's left in the room. Went to deputies, one of them's present here, "How you doing, Mr. Ford?", and it was questioned her, and no administrator, or no parent was called. My daughter's finally taken to the nurse, the AP removed my daughter from the nurse, placed in the main office with other student who she was fighting with. Other student parent was present in close proximity of my daughter, other parent staring at my daughter, intimidating her. Daughter was forced to write a statement while being concussed because she suffered a concussion. Daughter was told by the assistant principal to hang the phone upon me, told her if she would call me or text me, she'd be in more trouble. School never notified me at all, school never gave us no paperwork regarding the incident. Had a meeting with Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Dr. Franklin, beautiful person, thank you. Deputy Superintendent finds that my daughter did in fact tell the teacher that the student was bothering. The teacher's statement never made no mention of that. Next, you know, recommendation for expulsion, school failed to provide all documents regarding the incident. Hearing officer denied us admitting any evidence. Hearing officer allowed the attorney for the school to tell her to speed things up because she had another meeting. Hearing officer never asked the school any questions at all, received a hearing decision today, and now, here it is. Now, I'm being recommended, I got a recommendation for parenting. My daughter didn't get hurt in my care. Parent to parent, you know, father to father, parent to parent, y'all. We sent our children off to school, imagine your child come home banged up. I got eight girls. I got eight daughters. Two of my children got expelled, but they brought it on themselves, I even told the school that. But my Bravo squad, which is my middle children, the little, nah, they good. They flew planes over that school. They aspiring pilots. And now, you know, she had her education on blast and about to be stripped from her because the school failed to notify us, and that's wrong. Now, here it is, we had to get a lawyer for that, and I spoke to a lot of y'all, y'all hear from me a lot, but now, they want us to take parenting classes, which is absurd. I called.
Mr. Watkins, your three minutes is up, sir.
Roger that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
See y'all next meeting, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gus Philpott?
Good evening, Members of the Board, Superintendent Davis. I think Ms. Mackey might want to hear this, but maybe not. On September 13th, this school board voted to conclude Superintendent Davis's employment contract. A motion was made and seconded. It was a very lengthy motion, so lengthy that the recording secretary had to travel across the room, pick up a copy of it, take it back, and type it up, and then it was put up on the board. The final sentence in the motion presented to this board was, "I move that we conclude as a board, Dr. Davis, Dr. Davis's, employment contract." Now, what does that mean? Most people would say, "Oh, they fired him." The interesting thing is, Robert's Rules of Order says the motion as adopted is to appear in the minutes. The minutes. I presume everybody on the board read the minutes before you voted to approve them, but I think no one did. And the reason I think that is because no one suggested that that motion in the minutes at...in the minutes, which did not include the sentence about concluding Dr. Davis's employment contract, that sentence is not in the minutes that you approved. Therefore, the minutes are false, and this board approved a false set of minutes, and that's not good. I was really hoping you would address that tonight and fix it. The only way you could have fixed it was to re-insert that final sentence. You couldn't undo what you did two weeks ago, that would have to come up in another meeting, but you probably ought to do it. The vote was four-three. Four trustees voted to approve, tossing out Dr. Davis. Three trustees did not. It's a good thing that five didn't vote for it because it takes a quorum to fire the superintendent and had a fifth trustee two weeks ago approved it. Dr. Davis, I'm sorry, you know, you'd be gone without any discussion or opportunity to defend yourself. I don't know how you're gonna fix it now because you've approved the minutes. I guess the only thing you can do at the next meeting is come back and fix what was done wrong tonight. I don't intend to let it drop. I think it's a serious offense when a public body approves a false statement in the minutes. Thank you.
Alright, that concludes our public participation. We will now move on to item 8 dot 1, our student appeal. If I can have a motion.
Mr. Manny?
Dr. Scott?
For student appeal number one, I deny the appeal.
Alright, motion made to deny the appeal. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker, is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes unanimously, seven oh. We'll now move on to item 8 dot 2, breach of contracts. If I can please have a motion.
Mr. Chair, we have eight for the breach of contract, but I'm going to do them individually. I'll start with number one, and that is to deny the appeal.
Motion made by Dr. Scott, is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini?
Thank you. I just want to put on the record tonight, I'll be voting no for several of these grievances to be filed to the State Department, basically because we have multiple former employers...or excuse me, employees that requested relocation for personal family matters or extenuating circumstances, yet when I requested the information, I was told I can't have it because that's personal personnel information, so that's why I won't be supporting those. When they have sent in additional information, I will not be supporting it, thank you.
Ms. Agostini, that was an executive session discussion. However, that was pursuant.
But that is why I'm not voting for it, is I requested information and I did not get it, thank you.
And I want to be clear that it was pursuant to a policy that doesn't allow the board to receive detailed personnel records.
Well, that is executive session information. I was sharing that I didn't get the information, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just for the record, your clarification of the policy is not an executive session matter. You're clarifying the policy is actually public information. Thanks, Mr. Chair. I do agree with you, the policy is actually public information, thank you.
With that, we'll take the vote. Motion passes five yes, two no. Dr. Scott?
Employee number two, approve the request.
Thank you, so you're approving the appeal?
Yes, approve.
Okay, so motion to approve the appeal, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Agostini, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs...uh, Dr. Scott?
Yes, I've decided to approve this appeal because I know that we've had some issues and concerns with Blackwood Academy not being properly staffed, and because of that, I feel that employee number two need to be heard, so I do want to approve.
Yeah, there's...this isn't...there's not a request for a in-person hearing. This just does not allow it to be sent to the State Department of Education.
Right, that's being heard without the person showing...coming before us, so what I'm saying is that person will be heard because we are not sending that information to the State Department of Education for their certificate.
That doesn't mean it's gonna come before us, though, I just want to be clear.
Right.
That just means that we won't send...the termination's still there, it just won't go before the State Board of Education for their license.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're all clear about that.
Right, thank you.
Alright, is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll take the vote. Motion fails three yes, four no. If I can have another motion?
Yes, employee number three, deny.
Uh, Dr. Scott, we got...I need another one on that student, the motion failed.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to deny the appeal.
Ms. Mackey, motion.
For item number two.
Motion made by Ms. Mackey to deny, do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker, any discussion? Alright, with that, we'll take the vote. Oh, sorry. Alright, if I can have another motion?
Item number three.
First student, three, yeah, I remember, person three.
I deny that it goes before the State Board.
Um, so you're asking that it does not go in front of the State Board? Okay. So, motions were made by Dr. Scott, do I have a second? So, she's asking that it does not...
So, she's approving the appeal, is what...is that right?
Well, it's not an appeal, that's...we're clarifying.
You're right, you're right.
We're denying that...she's saying it will not go to the State Board. Okay, so do I have a second for that?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Agostini, is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote.
I just want to sit on the board before we vote, if that's okay?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. So, I think Christine, the way that Christine has written it, and I apologize to make sure we're all on the same page, so Christine's written it the way it is in our board docs.
Mr. Chair.
And I'm...I'm sorry, Dr. Scott, so that if you can just apply the motion you're trying to make within that language, so...but this is what...
So, the motion is essentially not...I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, Ms. Mackey, what?
If I could get a clarifying question, so the motion is not to uphold administration's recommendation, essentially?
Right, I move that we do not, um...
Uphold administration's recommendation.
Right, that we do not uphold administration's recommendation, yes, to...yeah.
Thank you.
Christine, are you rewording that one more time? Okay. Okay, that essentially is what we're asking to do for this one. So, right, because you're saying you do not want to make...so we're denying administration's recommendation, which is the same thing, so...is everyone clear on what we're doing here? Correct, it won't go before the State Board if it's voted with this motion.
I've gotten a second pop-up, Mr. Chair. Should we vote again, or do you have our first vote, Ms. Lewis?
Vote, you shouldn't be asking to vote on this one again.
Okay.
So, alright, so just to be clear, so it's brought back up, so she's asking to deny administration's request to bring it to the State Board of Education, so it will not go to the State Board. So, if you're...if you want to deny it, you vote yes, if you want the other, you vote no. Yes. Dr. Caution Parker, are you...are you clear on that? Yes, you're clear? Okay. No, no, I'm not asking for an answer, I'm asking, are you clear, was yeah? I...I know, I think we'll make it a little easier on the next one. The motion fails three yes, four no, I need another motion on individual number three.
Mr. Chair, I move to uphold administration's recommendation.
Okay, yeah, can you read the statement that they have?
I'll read the exact language to make it easier.
Mr. Chair, for number three, I denied, so we shouldn't have to make another motion.
Okay. Denying the administration's recommendation means you're asking to not bring it to the State Board of Education. Were you meaning to say you wanted to have it go to the State Board of Education? Was that your intent?
Okay, you guys are... Let me just read from this, because I think there is some confusion here.
Well, unfortunately, I've already done that motion, so if I can have Ms. Mackey do it.
Okay, that's fine. I'm gonna just move forward.
In the future, I think we have a method that will be easier to understand for the next one. So Ms. Mackey, if you'll make your motion.
I'm happy to do it, but just for clarification, for Dr. Scott, your vote reflects what your motion was.
Right.
Your vote, that yes vote means that you...
Right, I understand, but that's not what I'm saying.
Ms. Mackey, if you could just go ahead and read the new motion.
For employee number four.
No.
No, on number three.
The alternate motion. I move that we direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding employee number three. Who breached their employment contract with the district. That's the entire sentence.
Okay. So if you can read it again for individual, for employee number three.
I move that we direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding employee number three who breached his or her employment contract with the district.
Right.
Okay. Motion's made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? We'll have the vote. Go ahead, Ms. McFadden.
The way that it is worded, it's stating that this person breached their contract. Their contract had not yet been approved, and they requested, and most of these, they requested that, you know, they not have to start this year. And so the way that they are wording it...
We can't go into detail on each individual.
There's not any names, but I want the public to understand.
Ms. McFadden.
I would like the public to understand that...
Well, I can't, we can't give into details about individuals.
I'm not giving details, but I am going to say that all of these were in July before school started. The district is responsible for filling those spaces. If they are not filled in time, it is not left up to the employee to find and fill a spot if their contract has not been signed. That's why I am not going to approve.
If I can have order, please. If I can have order. All right, is there any other discussion? Okay, with that, we'll take the vote.
Mr. Chair, I'm...
Ms. Mackey? Huh?
Just making sure it was up there, and it is. Thank you.
Yes. Motion passes five yes, two no. All right, Dr. Scott, individual number four, employee number four.
For number four, I move that we direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding professional employees who breached their employment contract with the district.
Thank you. Motion made by Dr. Scott. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Agostini?
Yeah, I'm going to abstain from this vote because I sent an email to administration asking, was this position, was it a promotion, and I received no response, so thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion? We'll take the vote. Motion passes five yes, one no, and one abstention. Dr. Scott, employee number six.
Number five.
Oh, five.
Yes, for number five, I move that we direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding professional employees who breached their employment contract with the district.
Thank you. Motion made by Dr. Scott. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? With that, we'll have the vote. Motion passes six yes, one no. Dr. Scott, employee number six.
Yes, number six, I move that we direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding professional employees who breached their employment contract with the district.
Motion made by Dr. Scott. Is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes five yes, two no. Dr. Scott, employee number seven.
Yes, I move that we direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding professional employees who breached their employment contract with the district.
Thank you. Motion made by Dr. Scott. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes five yes, two no. Dr. Scott, employee number eight.
Number eight, and this is the final one for the public. I move that we direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding professional employees who breached their employment contract with the district.
Motion made by Dr. Scott. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes six yes, one no. Dr. Scott, thank you very much for leading us through that. I know we had a little difficulty, but I appreciate you getting that done for us. Next, we will move on to item 9.1. This is unfinished business action requested, approval of policy revision, policy GCG, part-time and substitute professional staff employment and substitute salary schedule. If I can have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Dr. Scott?
Before we go into this motion, I would like to have a point of privilege, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Just, it was brought to my attention several meetings ago that when board members are making comments that some of the administration, Dr. Davis's administration, don't agree with, that they make these faces or throw their hands up in the air or make faces towards other colleagues. So today, I just want to make sure that I was very observant, and I noticed that. That's something that I'll deal with later, but I just wanted to put administration on notice.
Not just that, I don't think it's appropriate to put... It's not appropriate to put administration on notice in this environment. You can direct your issues to Dr. Davis, but not, we don't oversee administration.
If you would just give me a moment, please. What I'm saying is I want them to be mindful of what they're doing, because now that it's been brought to my attention particularly, I am watching.
But Dr. Scott, it's not appropriate to put district staff on notice like that in a public meeting.
I would deal with Dr. Davis about that. That's why it was important to have cameras in here.
I'm going to call order. I would like to get back to...
Because it's just rude and disrespectful.
Dr. Scott, we're going to get back to the motion for policy GCG. If I can have a motion, Dr. Scott, if I can have a motion for policy.
Absolutely, but I just wanted it to be all actions that are seen.
Dr. Scott, if I can have order, please. If I can have a motion on policy GCG, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve policy revision, the policy revision proposal for policy GCG, part-time and substitute professional staff employment and substitute salary schedule.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Mackey, seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Agostini?
Thank you. My first question is, if aides are pulled from a class and put into another class to substitute teach, do they get the substitute pay?
Dr. Davis?
No, they won't get substitute pay if they're pulled out of the class as an aide, a classified staff, an hourly employee, I mean classified staff in the school district.
My second question is, when was the last board approved pay increase for our substitute teachers?
The historical data for substitute teachers started going back as far as June 2009. We then made a change for temporary rates in 2021, and then we have additional changes that are more permanent in August of 2021. So January 4th, 2021, we had temporary rates during COVID, and we're making August 2021 current rates. We, from August 2021 to current date, September 2027, we're looking to change the rates again.
So did the board approve these temporary raises?
The information, I can't remember if the board approved it or not, but the information was shared with the board because these raises were brought to you all as a result of the challenges of recruiting teachers during, substitutes during COVID. But I know the board was made aware of them.
They were made aware, but it's not on an agenda that it was approved.
What was the question, Mrs. Agostini?
No, that was just a comment, that it was, we were made aware, but the policy states that the board is supposed to approve substitute pay, and the board did not approve any of these temporary pay raises.
Let me get clarification from my staff. That gave me my attention. Shelley and Sean, would you all want to come to the podium and share?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The information was actually approved in the 2122 budget, and Shelley actually pulled a budget that was the last line item on the budget for that year that was approved by the board.
All right, well, I'm talking about when we did it in December of 2021, when we got a board briefing, excuse me, maybe 2020, and then it was implemented in January. Was there a board vote on that?
I don't recall if there was a vote on that.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have a couple of comments.
Ms. McFadden?
So on September the 10th, I sent out an email about substitutes, and I was wondering how many substitutes, I guess, how many substitute positions have we had that have not gone field since the first day of school? And I guess that would be kind of hard to tell because we had someone from Public Participation come and say that we have 171 job openings for Richland II subs for tomorrow. Is that correct?
I can't verify that. That's his information, not mine.
But is that typical?
Absolutely. It's been typical prior to COVID, having a hundred-plus subs prior to COVID in a district of 1,000-plus teachers to have a thousand, have 100 or so teachers out. I would take that almost any day, if it's just 100.
So my concern is, if there's 171 openings, where are these children?
They're in classes. They're being split up amongst classes. Their subs are covering. Sometimes administrators step in to cover classes. Sometimes they're sent to study hall. There's a multitude of practices that have been done. As long as I've been an administrator since 1999, those have been the common practices where you cannot fill a sub. This is not an unusual thing. It's actually probably better today than it was during COVID.
Okay, I understand that. So you're saying that students who would normally be in math class because of job fillings that need to be filled, that's not taken into consideration, the student or the teachers that are, you know, that we don't have any positions for. We're talking about regular classes that have students. What is going on with the seat time? Because if you have a math student and they have to be split up, are they going to other math classes, or you said they're going to multipurposes? So where is that learning and how are we accounting for that learning time and seat loss? I just, you know, and I had sent this in an email, and I wanted it just to, you know, you guys could just send it to me, you know, just an email or whatever, but I didn't get a response. So I was just wondering, where are the children going and how are the subjects that they're supposed to be learning? Because we've seen the school report card where, you know, there's a lot of decrease. So is that, does that have anything to do with it, and how can we fix that?
So, Mr. Chair, I really don't, I'm not sure if I can adequately answer the question, so I would turn to the board member and ask, what would be your suggestion to, to address this issue of having teachers not being at school, or teachers taking leave or sick, and then having a sub shortage? How would the board go about addressing those things differently than what administration has done to alleviate, to alleviate the concerns of instruction and seat time?
I understand that. So, you know, Amelia tells us all the time not to get in the weeds, and so that's not my purview. My purview is to be over here and see, and see the situation and bring it to administration's attention for you guys to handle that, because you guys are boots on the ground.
Right.
And so that would be, these are just questions that I have from this view that I've been told to see for you guys to handle this. I'm just saying, these are concerns that whenever I'm going through it and I'm seeing these substitute positions and these unfulfilled positions, that as a board member, this is what I'm supposed to be looking at, and just bringing it to your attention. And so that's all I'm trying to do, because I know that last year, we had gyms full of students, and I noticed that the grades were decreasing, and I'm trying to figure out what can we do, administration do, to kind of close that gap, to fix this. And I know that we just sent eight teachers to the board, so if they wanted to go to another district to teach, they can't do it. And if another district does the same thing, then their teachers can't come to us. So if we can have a little compassion and say, well, you know, for whatever reason, they've decided not to continue in this district, if they wanted to go to another district, they could, and we will want the same compassion from another district, that they won't send their teachers to the State Board to have their license denied so that they could come here to fill in some of these gaps. And so I'm going to leave it at that. I'm just going to put that out there, but this is just something that I was thinking about with these different positions not being filled. Thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
And I would like to say, I think that one of the things we can do is, the policy and the salary schedule is infernal, so by increasing the salary schedule, that is one thing that administration is bringing to us to help try to address.
So I would respond by, respond for the public's knowing, and since there is not a solution different than the solution that we're bringing, this is the reason why we're bringing the solution forward. Recruiting and retaining subs in our school district is not just a Richland II challenge, it's a challenge statewide, because we are in a teacher shortage statewide, nationally, and there is a competition for subs in the area. One of the things that we have to remember, and for those of us who have spent a lot of, most of our career in these public schools, we realize that our teachers don't just sub in Richland II. They sub in Richland I, they sub in Richland, Richland V, they sub in Lexington I. There are subs on multiple, they could be, one person can sub in four school districts right here in the Midlands, and not only, and drive less than 30 minutes to get to multiple schools within the district. Our attempt to solve the sub issue is to increase sub pay and offer a second category or additional category for sub members based on their educational, their educational degree or attainment, to entice them to come to our school districts to be subs, as well as high-quality subs. school districts to be subs, as well as high-quality subs. As relates to any other issue as far as breach of contracts, one of the reasons why we are following board policy, which requires that if you breach your contract, this is board policy requires this, that we bring it before the board to make the decision, and the board has the autonomy or the authorities to vote however it pleases on doing that. But I am required to bring those issues before the board for the board's consideration. But we do need teachers in classrooms, and so we don't want them breaching their contracts prior to the start of school, during school. And what we are practicing is no different from what other school districts across the district, the state is practicing as relates to that. This is our solution or a strategy, I should say, to address the issue of recruiting subs to our school district, which is to increase their pay and make it more attractive, as we've done in multiple positions across the district, to try to make the compensation worth the time and the effort of the individuals who would like to commit their time to serve in our students. And so you have before you a current representate, a current representation of that, which is a high school diploma or associate's degree would be $95. A four-year degree would be $105 a day, and a sub with a South Carolina teacher certification would be $115 per day, eligible for SE teacher rate, paid for long-term assignments. So a teacher who already has that, they don't have to wait the previous 10 days where they would, I mean, for a long-term sub position, they would jump. If they have a certification, they'll jump in and immediately get the $115 because they have the certification. We're hoping that that would attract them to take those positions, whether or not it's a long-term position, it's not. And in addition to our instructional assistance compensation, any classified staff member, including aides who are asked to cover an unfilled class, will be authorized for overtime as needed based on any additional hours they work. So for example, if an aide is asked to cover an unfilled class and was unable to complete the regular workload assigned to them, they will submit a timesheet for any hours worked beyond their regular contract hours and be paid on their regular rate of pay. Hours worked beyond 40 will be paid at the time and a half in accordance with FLSA guidelines. These are our recommendations to the board for your consideration to criticism of the policy to give us an opportunity to attract subs for our schools.
Thank you. Other comments? All right. If there's no other comments, then we'll take the vote at this time. Motion passes unanimously. 9.2, approval of the policy proposal, intellectual property. If I can have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve policy or intellectual property as presented.
All right. Motion made by.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Agostini, seconded.
I seconded.
By Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? I heard her say it. She's just quiet beside Is there any discussion? Well, no discussion will take the vote. It was seconded by Mrs. McFadden.
We both seconded. We were, Ms. McFadden, we didn't hear, that's all, but she got it.
Yeah, she got it.
Mm-hmm.
Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have a proposal for the February 14th meeting. It came to my attention that, that we have a board retreat scheduled for the third and a regular meeting on the 28th. So because we have two meetings that month, and we have had concerns before about the meeting on the 14th being on Valentine's Day, I'm asking to cancel the 14th meeting. So if I could have a, a motion to cancel the February 14th meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Holmes.
I make a motion that we cancel the February 14th regular board meeting.
Motion's made by Dr. Holmes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Scott.
Yes. I'm just wondering, why are we concerned about a February meeting when we are going to have majority new board members coming on in the next month? It seemed like that would be something that should be brought up with the next group of board members instead of us making decisions for a board meeting that doesn't take place until February. But I'm ready to take the vote, but I just wanted to make note of that, that it's a little ridiculous to me to be changing the meeting in February when the board is actually changing over half of the board members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
And I concur with Dr. Scott. I don't understand why this board would be making that decision to cancel that meeting on February 14th. Additionally, a huge concern of mine is that's generally a pretty healthy time for student appeals, and to make those students wait a whole month versus two more weeks when they're suspended, I don't think is in the best interest of our students. And again, I, I'm trying to decide why we are sitting here making that vote. That should be coming in December at the earliest.
I appreciate it. Last time I checked, that there's no policy, no law, nothing that inhibits the authority of sitting board members to make a decision. It's completely allowable under state law on any board policy.
Mr. Chair, let me ask this. Is our superintendent planning on traveling at that time? Is everybody from the cabinet planning to be here? Is there somebody that cannot be here?
Listen, I presented the reasons, I presented the reasons that we're addressing it. I have a, I have a motion and a second.
As a comment, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I know that there's a, a meeting schedule that is set in place for the 20, for the 2022, 23 school year. And I know that there have been conversations about people wanting as much advance notice with regard to scheduling as possible. So it seems to me that you're making a recommendation with regard to the year's, school year meetings as, as it affects some meetings and that people should vote their conscience. But I think you're just trying to, to, to make a decision as soon as possible regarding a meeting that is already on the calendar for the year.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. We have heard often that we need to do these things as soon as possible. Is there any other discussion? With that, we'll take the vote. Motion passes for, yes. Three, no. We'll now move on to item 11.1, a report on our safety update. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Minister Chair, members of the board, and to our public that is viewing and the attendance with us today. We're going to provide the board and the community with a safety, security plan and update. Providing this information for us this afternoon or this evening will be our chief for operations and logistics, Mr. Will Anderson. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Dr. Davis, and good evening to everyone. Thank you all for being here. As, as we've mentioned before, safety and security is always a top priority. We can't do teaching, we can't have teaching and learning unless our students feel safe, our staff feels safe, and the board has been behind that for many years with your commitment to safety and security. So thank you for that. I have a brief update of our first quarter of what we've been up to and some updates on the plan that was presented to you all in August at your board retreat. As you may be aware, aware, since the board retreat, where we last talked about safety and security, the South Carolina Coalition for Safer Schools has released their report and released their policy agenda for this, this 2023 year. I wanted to reference this, this, this evening as things that we have done in Richland Two, things we are doing in connection to that, things that we're not doing. We're not doing everything on here, but we're analyzing and working in partnership to determine if that's something that we need to do. Many of these things is, is, some of the things, for example, in yellow are not particular to this, to us as operations or us in the school district to do. It's more for our policymakers. But we, we think that this is a good, a good way to show the alignment of us in the district and what we're doing to those in the South Carolina Coalition for Safer Schools, which was made up of a lot of people for these policy areas they're, they're focusing on. And so I'll start, go through each slide of the white ones, students, of the white slides, student mental health, school climate, school facilities, training, and then the other mandatory responses. So in mental health, how do we align to what, what the South Carolina Coalition, we've had family intervention services for over 20 years. They mentioned that specifically in this. Richland Two was the first in this, in the state to do that, and we've been doing that service for over 20 years. We are a model for that in Richland Two, so we should be commended for that team that does that. Through ESR, we've added attendance interventionist, learning support service team. You can see all those, the different things that we do for student mental health in Richland Two. We continue to focus on that through other things, and I'll talk more about that in the plan we addressed later. Oops, wrong way, sorry. Staffing, we have increased social workers in middle school in this past year. For the past several years, I can't remember what year it was, I remember this board made a substantial increase in social workers. We now have 38 full-time SROs in our school system. We are working with the South Carolina Department of Public Safety to apply for six more SROs, which will make sure there's one in every single facility in the district. When I say facility, the centers, for example. You guys have added attendance administrative monitors at each high school, and we've also, one of the largest, if not the first in the state to have full-time district security officers, and we have those throughout our district. Our facilities, our bond referendum and our capital improvements have been able, our 8% dollars have enabled for us to keep our building safe and continue to do things to, to have our facilities safe. We're reduction of portables with CFK, for example, our HVAC improvements, our conversion to their door locks, our secure entrances at all of our schools, our cameras, our bullet-resistant glass and film, the, the new schools, for example, that were EL right with being different buildings and all going into one building. So again, another effort of, that's alignment to this, the safety plan. The safety protocols we do, you can see those there, that mirror are aligned to what they've mentioned, our safety drills, our bullying protocol, the behavior threat assessment, our monthly risk managers meetings, our facility audits, inspections. Again, these are things we are doing and have been doing for many years. And then lastly is the connection with our Be Smart Task Force, which is the involvement of other partners in community. We partner with local school districts, local law enforcement, area hospitals, all through the Be Smart Task Force. And so that's been a very big help. Again, another alignment to the South Carolina Coalition for Safer Schools. As mentioned before, we shared the facility, we, I shared in August, our plan for facility improvements to deal, to address safety, and then our policy or procedures improvements to, for safety. And so you can see on this slide, some of the goals we have mentioned. The purchasing of 12 metal detectors, that is completed, and we are looking at additional funding to purchase more metal detectors. We are in progress of adding the door alarms. We have already completed all the gate locks and gotten those switched. We are in the process of implementation of our crisis alert system. We will be, hopefully be doing the training for that in November. We are working, Ridgeview High School is our first school that will be getting the conversion of door locks. A lot of them already have the door locks about, of, all doors lock. I should, let me be clear. Every door lock, every door has the mechanism to lock. But we have, we have some inconsistencies on those, and so we're, we'll be first addressing Ridgeview here in October with their locks. Our camera conversion project is still ongoing. About 85%, 90% of that should be finished in June. The vestibles, we will finish our knees vestibule as soon as the, the glass comes in, and then we're still in progress of the bullet-resistant glass across the district. The practices and the procedures, pop-up metal detectors, we've started that in last school year, and we have done that, we started that again this year once the metal detectors came in. We will be continuing to monitoring and updating the progress with data to come back to the school board and others on the process, the procedures, of how that's going, et cetera. Our emergency plans and school plans have been completed and submitted to the State Department. We're in the process of doing safety audits, both at a formalized audit, meaning it's a high intensity checking, a lot of things, takes like a week, to daily audits by our security staff when they visit schools. And then, of course, trying to increase the SROs to grant funding or mileage increase. We continue to look for grants and opportunities to get more SROs. We have revised some of our safety and security policies, continue to revise those as we need. We had our first meeting for our district-wide ID system about two weeks ago, and we are working on identifying ways to continue the mediation and conflict resolution training. Some of the things we've done in the first quarter, we have changed our athletic event procedures. We have, you all have seen that and seen the changes we've had to that, and our first games, not this past Friday, the Friday before went very smoothly, and we hope to have very good, smooth games this week. As I mentioned, we've had three pop-up metal detector screenings thus far. We plan to have a few more in the near future, and we are learning from those. As a reminder, those are very much first time for a lot of these kids, and so the first time is a little different. Think about your first time going to the airport after 9/11 and the, and the wait and the changes that happened there. And so we're not perfect. We're making improvements, but in order to, to go through those detectors and to have the proper screening process, it does take time. We've done our drills, we've had risk manager meetings, we've had this summer, Rich County Sheriff's Department had active shooter training, both for us as a district, and they used the old Bethel-Hambury and old Forest Lake Elementary School for their training, and we continue our collaboration and coordination with the schools in Richland County Sheriff's Department. That's in the first, first six, six weeks, weeks of school thus far. We do, would like to come work with you all and the board on making, you know, the board policy recommendations as a way to, to see what the board, and some guidance and some, some ways for us to, to work as, for these recommendations. Metal detectors, for example, having a more clear defined policy or, or to that environmental policy, clear book bags, if that's something the board would like, and adding that, and then adding a student code of conduct. In partic, in particular, like a fan code of conduct you have at events as a way to, to ensure we have a good code of conduct for students and our fans at events in our, in our buildings. And with that, I went through that quickly. You all received this information in there. Dr. Davis and myself are here to answer questions. There's others here that, that I am not the expert in all of it, but we're here to answer any questions. You may have, Dr. Davis, Mr. Manning, thank you.
Absolutely. Ms. Mackey.
Mr. Manning.
Mr.
I got Ms. Mackey, Dr. Holmes, and then Dr. Scott.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson, thank you for your presentation. I know that safety and security has been an issue and something we've been concerned with. I'm sure that all board members, all boards since, you know, before my time on the board have been concerned with, and was a huge implementation, a huge part of implementation of the dollars that we wanted for the bond referendum. So I appreciate the constant and consistent updates we've gotten. Couple of questions with regard to clear book bags. Is that something that we would discuss at another time? The details behind that, does it have to be a certain size? Or would we need to get into the particulars at another time? If we did, if we were to implement clear book bags, would there be certain kinds that we would need? First question. Second question, with regard to the student code of conduct relative to safety and security, how would that differ from the behavioral components of our current student code of conduct?
Sure. I'll, Dr. Davis and I'll attack team this. So for the bags, we've been investigating what other school districts have that have implemented this, this clear bag as a way to see what's working. this, this clear bag as a way to see what's working. We have a clear bag policy for events, and so it'd be very similar to that. It's something that we, we'd like to, of course, bring, bring to the, to the board and the public. For example, I failed to mention, last night, we had the first superintendent's parent advisory council meeting, and we talked for over an hour, we could have talked longer, about safety, probably more than that, and very good conversation about some of these topics. We're talking about metal detectors and clear bags. No formal survey was given, but we had very good discussion, and we plan on continuing that discussion with other advisory councils and others to, for the clear bag policy. But it's definitely something that we would work collaboratively to ensure that we have a solid policy. In regards to the other question, the code of conduct, we have, you know, a student code of conduct, but I defer, that's not my wheelhouse, so I defer to Dr. Davis on anything with that.
As it relates to student code of conduct, particularly as it relates to safety, our objective is to bring before the board for your consideration, but really to get your input on the position that you want to take as regards to safety and security and what would be the appropriate consequence should a student violate cert to safety protocols. So for example, the state already requires that a student who brings a weapon to school, such as a gun, is, has a 365-day automatic expulsion. Are there other considerations for the violation of a code of conduct that will have specific consequences that are spelled out in board policy? So that there is, to reduce the level of concern and disagreement around what is appropriate to keep our schools safe. So bringing this before the board for their consideration to determine those types of factors. That could be anything from a physical assault, possession of a, any weapon, that's, or anything that's used as a weapon, some more specificity to, that will be placed in policy that would give administration appropriate guidance on how the board wants staff, administration to proceed as relates to a more foundational, and serve as a foundation to begin ensuring that our schools are safe and secure.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Sounds like another, a drill down conversation for another time. Thank you, Dr. Davis. And the clear book bags, just my little two cents worth, very much in favor of the safety, just, I'm sure there'll be some consideration as to a balance between safety and privacy of certain students, certain items. Thank you so much.
Lot of mixed, clear book bags from the survey were mixed, from the parent representatives that did, from the various SICs and PTOs, these are the elected representatives of the parent groups of their various schools. Still mixed on whether or not they support the idea of clear book bag versus non-book bag. So we've done the survey, we've done the formal survey, the informal survey. Before we make any decisions, we want to hear, we're going to want to hear from the board specifically on what they would like to see implemented in place, whether or not we should develop a policy around clear book bags.
Okay, thank you so much, both of you.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes, you're next.
Yes, Dr. Davis, thank you just now for the clarity on the clear book bag issue. I had a little bit of the same concern that Ms. Mackey did, so we'll drill on that later, as you said. I just want to say that the public has been asking for a concrete plan of what we're doing, how we're doing it, and when we're doing it. And we have, thank you for providing that in writing so that the public can see exactly what we're doing. Every board member up here takes the safety and security of our schools and our teachers and our faculty and staff very seriously, and so this has been a big issue. And so I thank you for making it perfectly clear, some of the things that we are implementing and how we intend to proceed forward to improve it. So thank you for taking the time to do that. My other question would be, is this, is this PowerPoint presentation something that we could put on the web, or is that not something that we could put on the web? And the reason that I'm asking that question is because a lot of parents don't watch the board meeting. So we want to dispel the rumor that we don't have a plan, as we heard tonight from someone coming to speak, that we don't have a plan for safety. We do have a plan for safety, but I would like that to make it accessible to as many parents as possible. It doesn't have to be in this format, but maybe in a different format. Is that something we could do?
This current presentation's on board docs right now, so it is available, but we can work with the communications department. We do have a safety, a link on our website, we can, we can work on getting this as part of that, so that, I don't think that should be an issue.
I think that's very important, because I think a lot of people don't go to board docs, they don't even know what board docs is, and a lot of people don't watch the meetings. But we serve 28,000, so we need to have it accessible so people can see exactly how their children are being taken care of. And I thank you again for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott.
Yes, I think some of my colleagues touched on some of my concerns, and one was the clear book bag, so thank you for clarifying that. And also, I think Dr. Holmes just talked on making sure that it's visible for others to see who may not take part in the meeting, and I think that's very important. As you guys may be aware, we had a safety committee meeting where Dr. Holmes had appointed me as the chair of that safety committee meeting, and on September 14th, I received an email from Mr. Manning saying that he was going to eliminate that committee immediately. And we received a lot of outpouring from parents stating that they wanted to be a part of that, they wanted to have their input, their concerns, and rightly so. So thank you for sharing this, because I think this will relieve to some of those parents who think we don't have anything in place, once they saw that the committee was done away with immediately, with no conversation with me as the board chair of that committee and none of the colleagues. So I do plan to have a community safety meeting later on, so stay tuned for that, I will put that out there. But couple of questions. One is, we had a concern today with the pop-up at Blythewood Academy, I'm sorry, Blythewood High School, and some parents were just outraged because students missed first period, and I understand that we're still trying to work out the kinks there. But with that, how long would it take for us to get permanent metal detectors in all these schools instead of pop-ups? Because with pop-ups, it interferes the, the learning of these students as well as parents, because one parent in particular was upset because her child studied for past couple of days for a first period exam and missed it altogether. But I reassured them that, you know, safety is our number one concern, we can always go back to make up that test. So what is the deadline, or do we have anything in place to make purchases of these metal detectors so we don't have to do the pop-up, they're permanent, and students can go through? That's my first question.
Based off of the information that was shared with us from the survey from parents, pop-up permanent metal detectors was not favorable from the survey to the community, to our parents to have permanent metal detectors. The pop-up metal detectors were more favorable for the parents. I don't know if permanent metal detectors will reduce the amount of time it takes to get into the class. The issue is the number of metal detectors that we would need at a high school like Blythewood or at Spring Valley and the staff to operate those metal detectors so that we have multiple entry points. Spring Valley High School is 2,200 students, Blythewood High School is 2,000 students. So having 2,000 students to 2,200 students come through the metal detectors when they're not accustomed to that, it gave the, would slow the process down. As we get more familiar with the process of coming through the metal detectors, we're still having to tell kids to take their Chromebooks out, to take their water canisters out, to take things like that, where the sensitivity of the metal is set at a certain rate, at a certain level, those things are going to ping each and every time. So, but if it's the will of the board and the board wants to see permanent metal detectors placed, that again will go back to this metal detector policy, and that will be put, be put into, put into policy that we will have the metal detectors, permanent metal detectors at all schools, or at all middle and high schools, and we would then go about the business of purchasing those metal detectors, and then we would need additional staff to be able to man those metal detectors. But I could not say with a high degree of certainty that that would reduce the time it takes to get into the building unless we have multiple stations and multiple entry points in our schools, at our, at our schools at that time.
Okay, thank you for that, and you kind of hit on my next suggestion. When we were considering purchasing a building like R2I2, the board members along with the superintendent, and it was before Dr. Davis' time, also administration, we flew out to somewhere, I can't remember. Mr. Anderson, you may remember. We flew somewhere, I can't remember where it was, and we had an opportunity to see a facility similar to R2I2, because this is what we wanted to do. I would like to suggest that Myrtle Beach, many of their schools, their middle and high schools, they have been using metal detectors for years, and I heard it works extremely well. I know I tried to get there over the summer, but was blocked by many. I would suggest that we do a board trip for those who would like to come, or for the new board members who may be coming in November, that we go and take a look at the schools in Myrtle Beach to see how well they're working. And also, when I made a comment today on social media, when they had an outpour of lack of love for Richland 2 at Blythewood High School, one parent suggests that we visit Spartanburg High School, stating that he is a graduate of Spartanburg High School, and that they have metal detectors and they work well. So I'm going to put that in the atmosphere that maybe we should plan collectively, or maybe the board members who would like to go along with me. Let's go visit Myrtle Beach and Spartanburg High School just to get a feel of how it's working, because in particular, one school at Myrtle Beach stated that they have almost 2,800 students, and it's a smooth ride with them coming in with metal detectors, so I'd love to see that in action. And then, Mr. Anderson, I know you had an opportunity to go visit Myrtle Beach, can you just briefly give us, you know, your opinion of what you saw when you went there on your visit?
Well, I guess the two, the two biggest things are, one, they're, the kids are trained, I guess, they know, they've been doing it, so they know what to expect. And secondly, they have way more staff than we do currently. We didn't budget for the staff, and so our current resources from a staffing standpoint did not allow us to do what they're doing. And so through the pop-ups, we're hoping to grab more data to come back to you all as part of your policy, that this is going to, our proposed cost is X if this is something that, that you as a board want to support through board policy. And so that's really the main differences. Quite honestly, I know, I know it was, there's, there's weight, but we were pushed, we were, kids were going through, being there at, at all the sites thus far, kids are going through very quickly, but I do understand, and I don't want to sound like we don't understand that concern, it's definitely a concern, but I think those are the two reasons right now why we're not able to be at this, at the, how these other schools who've done it for a long time are doing.
Right, and, and great point, because I don't expect us to be there because we're still working out the kinks, so I truly appreciate that. And I think that would be great if you can share with us at a later time, you know, what would it take with staffing? What type of staffing would we need? How much money would it actually, you know, cost us with some of those schools that you visited? So we'll know how to plan for that. If we can't plan this year, moving forward, we know exactly what to plan for, so when the budget comes out, we know exactly what we need to move forward. So thank you so much for that, and thank you for this detailed plan we have in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden.
Okay, I do have a couple of questions. So with everyone going through the front door, so are all the other doors of entry locked around the, the school, and the students are rerouted to the front entrance? Is that correct?
They're, they're either through the car rider entrance or the bus entrance, depending on the school. Yes, ma'am, but every other door is supposed to be locked.
Okay. And so, and I guess, I guess it wasn't really been, but I'm just curious, are students counted tardy of that first period?
They have, they have not been counted tardy. I know at Blythewood today, they were not counted tardy.
Okay. And how many SROs are needed for this? And are there teachers to keep the children in line? Because if you have a lot of students lined up around the building like what we've seen, is it only, you know, where are they positioned at? You know, how is that maintained? That kind of thing? Can you go through the protocol for what actually happens whenever they?
For one metal detector, you need, I'm just going to say staffing wise, you need someone outside before the metal detectors, kind of reminding announcements of what to do, and this is per one, so mind you, at, there's multiple detectors. You'll need a few, two to three at the table assisting with their things that are not, that are going to go off, Chromebooks, for example, to slide on the table. You're going to need a security officer watching as people come through to make sure they're coming and directing them through. You're going to need a security officer or two who will do the bag checks, so if the bag does go off, or the person goes off, they can do that secondary screening, and you're going to need at least an SRO or a deputy who's there in case there's an incident that the deputy needs to, to investigate from a criminal standpoint. And so doing the numbers, you can see you're upwards of six to 10 people, depending on that, so it does get out there. Now we've, today, for example, we asked the, the SRO to move out to the line, so we have a presence, an armed presence out there so that they can watch, and so those are some, some strategies we're trying to do to make sure that the kids, if they're in line, for example, or still have some type of safe, you know, safety.
So you said there would be more than one entry, so about how many are you taking out to each school each morning? How many metal detectors?
Right now, we've been doing three to four, depending on how much staff we can get. So we're also still, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, Ms. McFadden, but we still are, the same staff we're running that are the same staff who have to do all the crossing guards, for example. So that, we're limited in our staffing ability from a security standpoint, but the school has been, has been, we're collaborating together with the school to augment the staffing. So I didn't mean to cut you off, but.
So we have about like, I would say, four metal detectors going up at the schools in the morning, and then maybe six to 10 persons, is that 24? Or is that?
Yeah, and as it, and as, and.
24 officers? Or SROs?
No, not that many. I'd have to come back with you on exact, some of these exact numbers, but in, it's taking a lot of staff right now. Now, as it goes better, we should have at least, there should be less number of staff to do this, but at the current standpoint, we're going anywhere from six people per metal detector.
Okay.
So I guess 24, yeah, six times four.
Okay, so with that, so we already talked a little bit about how the students are being maintained in that long line wrapped around the building. So when do the principals find out that the detectors will be at their school?
Right now, we meet with this, we meet our, well, our safety and security team meets with the admin team the day before.
Okay, the school's admin team the day before?
That's the current plan, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And they walk this, they've already walked the school, but they meet with them the day before to, to make sure we are ready to go for the next day.
So they don't know before that day that, that it's going to be your school? So if you wanted to do Blythewood tomorrow, you wouldn't be contacting them today?
That's our current plan, but as we continue to evaluate these pop-ups, we, we may have a, it'd be very random, meaning we're not going to pick it and, we're going to, just, Blythewood could be three days in a row, for example.
Right, okay.
That's our plan, but we also realize that we might need to give the school more of a heads up due to administrators who are tied up in IEPs or other meetings, and pulling them from those that have been planned for a long time is difficult the day before. So it's still going to be random, and we're still working through some of those kinks, but as it, as it stands right now in our pop-ups, it's, it is the day before, yes, ma'am.
Okay, just a couple more questions. So when do the SROs find out that they're going to be manning that particular?
They're in planning with, with our, with our, with our security and safety team. They talk all the time, so.
So they would know that like weeks before, days before, that they're going to be at this particular school?
I can't tell you exactly, but they're, they're in coordination with our team together to make sure we've got that, there's spots covered, yes, ma'am.
So when you have a meeting, say on Monday for, you know, to go to a particular school, this staff here knows where it's going to be, where they're going to go, your team knows, and so the SROs know who's going to be going where, and the school finds out the day before. I'm just trying to paint a timeline of what it looks like, because the board don't have any information about how this is happening, so I'm just trying to see from, you know, how is this happening? What's the layout of this plan?
Staff is, school administration is notified the day before, that may include the resource officers, but this is a random pop-up right now. We're trying to keep that information as closely guarded as we can, so that information is not leaked out by sharing it in a type of communications where communication. is not leaked out by sharing it in a type of communications where communications can be shared. So we're trying to keep this as closely guarded as we can, but give staff the adequate time, school administration the adequate time to prepare to do so. Teachers, we wanna try to avoid having teachers to be a part of that. We don't want teachers in conflict with students the first thing in the morning as those students are trying to come through, those students are coming through the metal detectors. Because once they go through, they are moving on to class. So we need our first period teachers in their first period classes. As I shared with the board in the very beginning of this process, when we started beginning, talking about metal detectors, I just wanted to remind the community and remind everyone that we said that staffing was going to be a issue, that it was going to be a challenge if we wanted to put metal detectors in all of our schools. We talked about whether or not we would run metal detectors all day, whether or not metal detectors would just be in the morning and would we have the staff to make sure that everyone, even when they come onto our school campuses, after the first period is started, would we make those individuals go through those metal detectors at that time? Currently, we are, we are operating the metal detector pop-up at our very best capacity as we are learning from each administration of the metal detectors and making adjustments on the fly. But this is a priority. And we shared in communications and in board, in board meetings with the community that this was gonna be an inconvenience for some of us. And yes, we do realize that it does start, require, first period will start a little later. We're trying to cut down on that time, but there's gotta be a trade-off until we get the staff in place to be able to conduct and the multiple metal detectors. One of the things is we need to also keep in consideration, we're not the only ones purchasing metal detectors. And so there is a supply chain backup on getting metal detectors into our schools because other school districts around the country are also purchasing these, I won't give them the plug, these metal, these metal detecting devices in their school districts. And so it's a learning process for us. If this is gonna be a permanent implementation in our policy, that is really where we need information and what we're trying to determine as we're doing these pop-ups will give us good data to determine how many weapons we are detecting from those things. That's where the focus for us is not necessarily on the time that's important, but from what I heard from the board was the concern about weapons in schools. And the processes and the recommendations we made weren't necessarily well received when we talked about things like see something, say something. We talked about the be smart. We talked about some of the procedural things we can do. We wanted a heartening of those types of processes. This is what was asked of us. We're putting it in and implementing it to our best ability with the staff that we currently have and getting the input from the constituents. I heard we want to make sure we have parent voice. And so we sent that email out, that survey out to parents. I've spoken to the parents at the parent advisory council. And as of right now, the pop-ups are the most favorable utilization of these metal detectors and it's one that we can do immediately. So if we do go in the direction we shared with you all in previous communications, what we thought the cost was gonna be, I think, Mr. Anderson even having this presentation, what we estimate the cost would be, or what cost will be. But we're thinking about, there's gonna be at every middle school, every high school, you're gonna need multiple doors and every school's not the same. And it's important for us to recognize that. Again, Spring Valley High School is 2,200 students. Blithwood Middle School is 700 and some odd students. But E R I T is 1,300 students. Or 14, close to 1,400 students. It's about the same size as Richland Northeast High School. And so it's a difference and it's gonna require different staffing and different configurations in order to make this work. And it's not gonna be perfect. The second administration of the year, or the third administration of the year, I personally went to the Spring Valley one and observed it for myself to see what the process was like and what was going on. And it's not just a device and not just personnel, but it's also getting our students to do what they're supposed to do, which is stay in line and go through the process, not sitting down outside, not trying to walk away, not doing other things, but getting in line and going in, getting your Chromebooks out, constantly reminding them to do those things so that the process is more smooth.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
I'm sorry. We ask that the community gives us some patience as we work through this process and we will be able to give you more update information as we've conducted these multiple times.
Thank you so much for that.
I'm gonna call a five-minute recess. I need a five-minute recess.
Well, I was gonna say, thank you for that because that's what I was looking for, for clarity, to make sure that there wasn't information that was able to get out. So that streamline of questions that I was asking was basically so that, you know, how close is that gap between people finding out? So I appreciate that. And just like Will said, I agree with the pop-ups as well because you could have Blithwood three days in a row and it keeps them from, students from being able to know when it's gonna be here, when they're gonna have a pop-up at their school. So I like the plan that's in place right now. So I was gonna say, thank you for that clarity, because I wouldn't want them to know whenever it's gonna happen. So that's what my line of question is for.
All right. I wanna take a five-minute recess and we'll come back. All right, we're gonna reconvene. Thank you. Ms. McFadden, were you done with your questions? Okay, good. All right, Cheryl, Dr. Conshon Parker, and then Ms. Agostini.
Okay. Years ago, back in the 90s, this whole thing came up about school safety and bringing book bags to school and all that. So this is not really new. But at one time, and I'm interested in finding out if this came up during the advisory meeting, Dr. Davis. Teachers were suggesting, and parents were suggesting, that we just have classroom sets of books, which reduce the need of having book bags. But just having classroom sets of books to keep in the classroom for the students so they don't have to worry about carrying the books around and whatever. And that they have a certain kind of clear book bag, a certain size, it's very small, you know, that can be, you know, could be seen. Did that come up at all with any of the parents or the teachers?
That did not come up with parents and teachers. Things have somewhat changed a little bit when it comes to textbooks and I can't speak with a whole lot of authority on this because I've kind of transitioned out of the building. But I believe what happened was at the depository, the State Department, you basically get one textbook per person, per student. Now, it used to be a time we could have those surplus of textbooks in the book room, but now, basically, when they look at the roster, if you have 300 students in algebra and then you get a certain number of textbooks for the number of students that you have. So we don't have the luxury of unnecessarily allowing them to have a classroom set. We may be able to have a classroom set if there's extras and then everybody use that classroom set. But as you probably remember in our school district, we have different teachers, and we're working on that, have different textbooks for the same subject. And depending on if you're in a specialized program, you may have a different textbook for the same subject. And so we don't allow those things anymore. But some of our classrooms, books do, are online and are available, but then we do have students who don't prefer to have that online. And some of our schools, we don't really use lockers as much as we used to use lockers. And particularly at our high schools, one of our bigger challenges with bags would be not necessarily the book bag, but the additional bags that our students carry. Cheer, band, basketball players, athletes and things like that who carry multiple bags to school on a daily basis. And how we would address those additional bags that are in the building. And so we've had some discussions around how we would do those things. Would there be a bag check-in? Where you would check your bag with your, with your coach and leave it in the gym, in the gym locker room, your coach's office? Your instrument would need to be checked in and then taken down to the orchestra or band room? How would we go about doing those things to try to reduce the number of opportunities to carry bags around campus?
Thank you, Ms. Agostini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you clarify for me again, the SROs? How many SRO, we've got 38 SROs. How many are those Richland 2 full-time employees and how many of those are grants from the county?
None are Richland 2 full-time employees. They're all.
Excuse me. Contract, I got, okay. So.
10, 10 are the most recent grant. Four were the year before grant. And then 23 were from the previous contract. That equals 37. The 38th one is the sergeant who's over Richland 2.
Okay. And then, and we're hoping to get six more, but how, what is the duration for the grant period?
I'm gonna, if you don't mind, defer to Dr. Miles.
As Dr. Miles is coming forward, I believe the duration right now is unknown. It is, the expectation is that it's going to be renewed continuously by, this is the Department of Public Safety.
Correct.
In conjunction with the directive of the governor to get SROs in schools.
They're funded out of the recurring budget at the state. So the legislature would have to stop that if they chose.
So it's annually?
It's annual.
Okay. So, okay, but, well, that answers my question there. And then my question is about, how many administrative monitors do we have at each high school and middle school?
We may have to get that to you. I don't know off the top of my head. I'm looking at Dr. Franklin or Dr. Davis, but I, off the top of my head, I don't know. I'm sorry.
I believe we added six additional administrative monitors. I believe that gave each high school one administrative monitor. I can't say off the top of my head with certainty, but we can get you the number of the number of administrative monitors we have in the schools.
All right. So my next question then regarding the administrative monitors, what is their duty? What is their responsibility? Is it to walk the halls?
They work, go ahead, Dr. Davis.
Yes, thank you. Well, I appreciate that. Their responsibilities can vary, but their primary responsibility is to walk halls, to assist with students when there are issues and concerns. They are on duty during lunch in the mornings. They go to classrooms and if they need to help escort a student from a classroom to the administrator's office or even if they're in, they'll check bathrooms. Their constant job is to monitor what's going on in the hallways and the buildings continuously.
Okay. Well, because I guess my concern is when I went to Blithwood Academy at the end of August, the administrative monitors were not monitoring the hallway. They were basically supervising students in rooms so that there were no hall monitors. So that's, you know, are the people actually roaming the hallways and monitoring the school? Are they, you know, being put in classrooms substituting?
We would work on that. That's one school of several.
I'm curious if it's happening at other schools.
It's not happening at other schools. We don't have the challenges. But I can say 100% that it has not happened. Everyone at some point, if you worked in a school, whether you're the principal, has watched a class. Every, everybody, if you worked in a school at any point, whether you're the principal, everybody has pitched in to watch a class and it's always been that way. So it happens from time to time that we step outside. All other duties assigned is a part of our agreement as employees in the school district. We have our descriptions and then we have that thing of all other duties assigned. And so sometimes you have to step in and cover classrooms. Sometimes you have to clean up floors. Sometimes you have to check the restrooms when you are an administrator, whether you're a teacher. So those things happen from time to time. I know it's more consistent at one particular school than another and we've addressed that, those concerns. But holistically, as far as administrative monitors are concerned in the school district, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing at their schools.
Mr. Manning, I have one quick question.
Ms. Agostini, are you done?
I'm finished, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Scott.
Yes. Dr. Davis, can we use bond money to purchase metal detectors and also to pay for administrative monitors?
That's a great question, Dr. Scott. I know, we've gotten mixed, I've gotten mixed information about whether or not you can use, I know you can use bond money, yes.
Not for the monitors, though. Not for the people, though.
Not for the people, yes. I was, not for people. Because we do have bond money that's earmarked for security. So yes, but it would, didn't mean we may not be able to do something else that we said that we were gonna, so we'd have to look at that. As far as the people's concern, we cannot. As far as the people's concern, we cannot by law do it for people. Now, we've also heard reports about ESER funds, but there's a lot of conflicting information about whether or not ESER funds can be approved to use for safety and security in schools. And so we're monitoring that. We're, we're trying to figure that out as well. Thank you for that question.
Thank you, yeah. I would, I just would use a little bit of caution with the bond because one of the things that we hear from the public often is, you said you were gonna use the bond to do X, and then you change what you're using it for. And sometimes that has long-term backlash for future bonds. So I, not to say not to do it, but I would want to be very cautious of what we didn't do in order to do the metal detectors through the bonds. But the other thing, well, I, I want to clarify, and I'm gonna ask you or Dr. Davis to elaborate on this because I heard a comment earlier about, you know, people come in and they have certain metal objects, keys and other things in their pocket. And it was sort of alluding to the idea that the metal detectors weren't working. And I think when we say metal detectors, we're thinking more of a traditional metal detector. Can you describe more what, what the, the technology we're using, how it works?
Sure. I'll, I'll try my best without giving a plug of this certain company. But in, in essence, it's, these are programmed, and if I don't do well, I don't know if Dewayne's still here, but these are programmed to pick up the type of metal and the heavy metal that are used in, in types of weapons. And so they are, they pick up those types of weapons. If you've been to a University of South Carolina football game recently, or an event, it doesn't, they don't detect keys, other types of objects that, that are, that are used in that. In simplest terms, the idea of this technology is to expedite the process of getting people in and out of, out of facilities, but still with the fidelity of picking up things that could be used as weapons. And so the examples earlier, you don't, actually, you don't take those out of your pockets. You're, you keep them in your pockets so you can walk through. And then, and then it, it would only pick up those things that are considered a weapon. Yes, sir.
Okay, so what, it detects small-
And I think Dr. Davis had a follow-up.
And I just wanted to make sure that, that I understand that it, the device has, the technology has the capability of calibrating where you can set it to detect certain, a weapon of, of certain density so that it can be set to either pick up something as small as something minute or as, as dense as a knife or a, a, a weapon, a gun or something of that nature. And so I've walked through the metal detectors multiple times at the games, and it doesn't detect your keys, but if they may be set at a density that's heavier than that, it will pick that up and the lights, the lights go off. Am I correct in understanding that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at our resident metal detector expert, Dewayne Robinson, Sr., and he's giving me a thumbs up, so, yes.
I thought I remembered that in the expla, in the explanation. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So, so there's the potential, like, a very small knife could potentially go through because it may not be big enough to, to do that, or?
I mean, the example given of some dental tools, I mean, that's possible, but again-
Well, we have no way of verifying that, and so we won't speak on that.
Okay. But the general idea is that it, it keys another thing, common metals in your pockets, designed to leave those in your pockets. It, it doesn't mean there's a failure in the system because those things went through.
So at Spring Valley, we had students take their three-ring binders out because the three-ring binder was going off. That's how sensitive it was set at that day.
Oh, wow, okay.
So if you have your three-ring binder, one-inch-and-a-half binder, those things were going off at Spring Valley that day because it was set at that level of sensitivity. That's what it was picking up, the binders inside of the plastic.
Oh, wow.
So those, and again, that's learning. That's the calibration. That's the, the learning experimentation of doing it.
Yeah, he answered that much better than I did. Thank you.
No, thank you, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that just because students may go through with a piece of metal in their pocket, that that doesn't mean that the system is not functioning as it should, so-
Yes, sir.
Because I think that's a key difference than what we hear, what we're used to when we hear metal detectors. Like, the last time I went to the, the Spring Valley football game and got wanded, I had to take every piece of metal out of my pocket. That's a different technology.
Yes, sir.
So, okay. Thank you, and I appreciate the, the detailed plan. Dr. Davis, I know you had presented a lot of this to us at the board retreat. Prior to that, we had seen this information presented to us as a board on more than one occasion. And I appreciate the fact that we're actually taking steps and we're implementing this. And of course, there's a huge growing and learning curve. But thank you for all the work that everyone's putting into it, and, and the commitment from the board and the district to, to get this done. And I appreciate the fact it's more than just technology. To me, the mental health and some of the other pieces we have may be more important even than the technology, frankly. And, and from what we've seen with studies, long-term, those are the things that we have to do in order to help prevent issues going forward.
No, I, I thank you for saying that, and thank you for saying it, everyone. Because I, I'm just one person. There's a lot of people who, who spend a lot of time and energy trying to make sure our schools are safe. So they, I just, I thank them publicly. They're, they're, they're great people who are helping us all, so thank you, Mr. Manning.
Thank you very much. All right, we will now move on to the back-to-school report. Dr. Highlights, Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Chair and members of the board. I know the hour is getting late, so please excuse my expedient approach to trying to get this information covered. But it's very important information because it represents the back-to-school report from the superintendent for the 2022-2023 school year. So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and to our guests here in, in person and watching online, in place, in place of our usual district highlights, tonight I will deliver the annual back-to-school report from the superintendent. Our 2023 back-to-school reports includes an overview of our focus for the year, some quick facts about the district, an update on our, on our strategic planning process, a few details about our new mass communication systems known as Parent Square. And we will end with some moments of joy as we celebrate some early successes and experiences so far this school year. This year, we are focusing on achievement, culture, and environment and talent. Hopefully, achievement, culture, and environment and talent are familiar to our Richland Two community because, as you see, as you see here, they are the universal goals of our strategic plan. When we developed our current strategic plan back in 2017, we identified achievement, talent, and culture, and environment as the areas for developing goals for each of our core values of learning, character, community, and joy. So this year, we hone in on universal, on our universal goals. We reorder them to form the acronym ACT. This reminds us to take action to achieve our goals, assess our culture and environment, and to retain our talent. Our achievement focus remains, reminds us to remain achievement-oriented as an organization, not just in academics, but in all that we do. This focus keeps us moving forward. When we assess our culture and our environment, we want to make sure Richland Two is a place that is safe and secure, that is affirming and inclusive, respectful and professional, supportive and appreciative, and connected and informed. We recognize this achievement goal is a lofty goal, but one that we are committed to strive toward, this, this level of retention. Our focus on achievement and culture and environment will support our retention efforts. And you see our goal is at 95% this year as a district, as an organization. As we are looking over the student counts shown here on the screen, I want to remind everyone that student counts do fluctuate. What you can take from, what you can take away from this chart as of this point in time is that we have been, we have seen an increase in the number of students compared to la, the last day of school from the 21-22 school year. The first official count that is submitted to the State Department will be based on the number of students enrolled in our district on the 45th day of this school year, which will be, which is October the 9th. Here, we see the current demographic breakdown of our student body population. This chart looks very familiar to the one from last year. From last year's back-to-school report. Back-to-school report with any, with, with any differences falling within less than one percentage point. One area that we have seen a substantial increase over last year in terms of our student count is the number of students identified as homeless. Within the first two weeks of the school, of, of school this year, we've identified 70%, 70% more students as homeless than we had did all, than we did over the same amount of time last year. We, we bring this to everyone's attention as this is a concern for our entire community, not just the school district. The impact of this increase will be felt by all. We already know that we need more assistance from the community for our weekend meal backpack program. Last year, last school year, we distributed at least 20,000 backpacks of food to students who took them home so that they could have food over the weekend. The number will certainly be higher this year. We need at least seven more community sponsors in order to have one sponsor per school. For community organizations who are interested in helping, please contact either Ms. Abby Cobb, our district lead social worker, or Ms. Maria Owens, our district executive director for strategic partnerships. Our transportation and food services numbers help to illustrate the magnitude of the district's operation. We run a true transient system, a system that serves, services 339 bus routes with 2,804 bus stops. We run one of the largest food service operations in the, in the county. On our average meal served per day so far this school year exceeds 6,000 breakfasts and almost 14,000 lunches. That's per day. The employee counts reported here are based on a report ran on September 23rd. Like our student count, the specific numbers are going to be varied based on when you pull data for our employee database. With attention focused on the teacher shortage across the nation, we are, we are asked quite often about vacancies. So we felt it was important to share that, share that data in this back-to-school report and put these figures into context which this chart on the right illustrates. While our recruitment efforts are ongoing, we also developed plans before school started on how to ensure teaching and learning was not interrupted due to the vacancies. And multiple non-traditional teaching models are being utilized this year, including learned, long-term subs, job sharing, dual modality, virtual instruction through a third-party source, and non-certified teachers. The parents of classes being taught using one of these non-traditional teaching models was notified at the beginning of the year. The letter to the parents explained that we remain steadfast in our commitment to providing students with a premier educational experience. Schools and district administrators and instructional coordinators are collaborating to provide support to monitor instruction and student progress. Student, state curriculum standards and district pacing guides are being utilized, and we are periodically assessing the effectiveness of these non-traditional models and making adjustments accordingly. The 2022-2023 school year marks the last year of our current strategic plan. Developing a strategic plan for our school district is an involved process. This time around, we are collaborating with the Scholar First Incorporated to navigate the process that started in July 2022 and will wrap up in June 2023. Developing a new strategic plan will involve the work of many individuals and include representatives from all the, from, from our district, parents, students, employees, parents, and community members. Thanks to our community, our communications department, I know parents, employees, and even some students have already heard a lot about our new mass communication platform, which is Parent Square. We made the switch to Parent Square to improve our efforts to keep parents informed and to support parent engagement. It provides a safe and secure way for the school, principal, teacher staff, parents, guardians to send and receive school and class information, share pictures and files, see calendar items, sign up to volunteer, send one-to-one messages between a teacher and a parent, and much more, all in one centralized place. To maximize the benefits of Parent Square, we encourage parents to download the Parent Square app. Currently, about 34% of our parents have the app, and we would love to see that percentage keep increasing. And now finally, some of the moments of joy that we've already have so, so far this year to celebrate. About a week after school started, our school district and the city of Columbia announced a partnership to students who will get opportunities to work in various departments within the city to gain valuable work experience and earn money while doing so. The partnership will give students the opportunity to participate in mock job interviews and receive feedback from human resource personnel in preparation for actual job interviews. This joint effort will also support job readiness for current and future potential employment opportunities for our students. If you were on social media last week, you certainly couldn't miss our students and employees celebrating Attendance Awareness Week. While September is Attendance Awareness Month, we hope that last week's celebration will remind us all that school attendance is essential to student success. Addressing and improving student attendance will ensure students are on track to learn and succeed. Encouraging regular school attendance is one of the most powerful ways we can prepare our students for success, both in school and in life. Attendance is related to a child's ability to succeed in all areas of school, academics, behavior, or, or social. Anytime a child misses a day of school, it is a missed opportunity to learn. Regardless of the reason a child is out of school, they are missing instruction. When parents and schools make attendance a priority, it helps students to achieve better grades, develop healthier, develop healthier habits, avoid dangerous behaviors, and have a better chance of graduating from high school. Also last week, the American Heart Association announced that Summit Parkway Middle School Magnet Lead Teacher, Betsy Do, was named the National Outstanding American Heart Challenge Coordinator, and I was chosen as the National Administrator of the Year. Kimberly Dixon, Vice President of the Youth Market for the American Heart Association nominated both of us. Both of these awards recognized the generosity and compassion of our employees, students, and parents whose efforts to help the district raise $110,000 for the association during the 21-22 school year. We recently learned that 11 students in Richland School District Two who are showing exceptional academic ability and potential for success and rigorous college studies were named semifinalists for the 68th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. They are now in the running to be named finalists in the next stage of the program. The start of this year was extra special for Bethel Hanbury Elementary and Forest Lake Elementary with the opening of their new school buildings. As you may recall, these schools are two of the three rebuild projects that were approved by our community in the 2018 bond referendum. And just today, we celebrated another milestone in our, in our capital projects, the groundbreaking of our district's first performing art center. This facility is a dream come true that has been long in the making, and soon our students, employees, and community will have the stage they deserve to develop and display their talents. Mr. Chair and members of the board, this, this concludes this year's back-to-school report. Thank you for the opportunity to share this update to you and the entire Richland Two family.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Board members, comments? Ms. Mackey?
Mr. Chair, too many comments to, to speak on, Dr. Davis. But one of them I do appreciate, I, I keep forgetting to say, is Parent Square. As a parent of two Richland Two graduates, and, and was really engaged, that Parent Square would have been something handy to have at that time. Very convenient, but of course, as technology progresses, you have better and better apps. So I hear so many people talking about how useful and helpful that Parent Square app is. And as a parent, I can, I can appreciate that. I just wanted to share the accolades that I hear about that. Attendance Week, I appreciate you sharing that. And I don't recall, like, in the past, our hearing issues with Attendance Week. Is this something that we've started to highlight as, as the nation has a spotlight on that? Like attendance, do we have overarching attendance concerns?
No, we actually have some attendance concerns when it comes to chronic absenteeism in the district. It's something that's around, that's not just here, but it is something that is impacting our school district, particularly as we are coming off of, coming out of COVID. It is important for us to have a more laser focus on ensuring that our students are showing up to school each and every day. So it is, is it is a, a actual focus for us this year as well.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your report.
Board members, other questions or comments? Dr. Davis, thank you, and I just downloaded the app. So I don't know if I pushed it up a percent, a half a percentage or something, but I, I downloaded it. Yeah. All right, next, we're going to move on to 12.2, the policy revision proposal, IHD Adult Community Education. Dr. Davis?
Uh, Mr. Chair, we have our deputy superintendent, Dr. Marshall Lynn Franklin, who traditionally walks us through our policies, but before you, you see a policy that we did share with you all at the board retreat regarding our, I'm sorry, I don't think we shared this policy at the board retreat.
We did.
Regarding adult community education, this policy was issued on 10 October of 2019, and you see the, the recommendations before you. Dr. Franklin and I stand ready to address any questions should the board have any.
All right, board members, questions or comments? Ms. Agostini?
I have one question, just where, the, the new verbiage that's added, an additional exception, is when the board approves the enrollment of 16-year-olds as one directed by court order. When it's directed by court order, do we have a choice, or we can still deny the student admission into adult ed?
We really don't have a choice, but the board does vote on it. But if it's, if the child is ordered to attend, we are obligated to allow the child to be admitted to the program.
Okay, thank you.
So I, um, I, I guess along with that, so if, if it's court order, does it still, no matter what, it still has to come before the board?
It does, because the child, because the child is 16.
Okay. All right, other questions or comments on this policy revision? I know this is one the board asked to have reviewed, so. All right, thank you. We will move on to the next one, Policy BAA, Board Self-Evaluation. Um, this is one that we asked, um, or that I asked to have us look at, um, this year, it says that the School Boards Association will assist, and I think there's times where the School Board Association can't assist, um, and maybe others, so the language was struck, um, out that says that the School Boards Association will assist. Are there questions? Ms. Agostini?
Thank you, and, um, first of all, just, I, I appreciate that the South Carolina School Boards Association, um, that we remove that so that they are not required to facilitate this, but, um, I would prefer to have it during a special meeting and not during a regular meeting. While I appreciated your efforts and saw your concern, I think it would be more beneficial if we did something like this at our summer retreat, um, because it, it just was sort of long and drawn out, and I think we would have been more productive in the self-evaluation process if we'd actually had it at a special call meeting.
So Ms. Agostini, do you want to see that in policy, or is that just a practice that you would like the board to?
No, I would like to see it in policy, that it should be during, so that remove the strike.
So in a special call meeting, okay.
Just go ahead, refer to the first.
Uh, Ms. Mackey?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Ms. Agostini, were you done?
No, I, I have another comment too, just.
I'll come back, Ms. Mackey. Go ahead.
Seeing the, the last sentence, when we, you know, continually talk about trying to comply with policy, following the evaluation, the board chairman will make a summary report of a process at the next regularly scheduled board meeting, and I don't think that's something that we've practiced.
Um, and I, and I guess the question is, is that something that we need to continue to do? I mean, because it's a public meeting, even when it's on a special call meeting, so is there a need for us to, um, to rehash the, uh, the meeting, or is that something that y'all would be amenable to striking?
Just my opinion, you know, having the, the facilitator perhaps share with the board chair some feedback that the board chair would then present after the self-evaluation might be useful versus just the, you know, the conversation.
So you would like to see that remain?
I would.
Okay. Other questions? Ms. Mackey, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. With regard to during a special board meeting, if that is stricken, you can still have the self-evaluation during a special board meeting, you're just not mandating it, especially if people are concerned with the number of meetings that are held in a year. Not mandating that it be during a special meeting means that it can be during a meeting, special call board meeting, or not. So if you strike the language, you're not binding yourself to it if you have a concern with how many meetings you're having per year.
Yeah, I guess we need to think through, because if I say special call board meeting, and Ms. Agostini, just to think through this, does that mean like if, if it's a board retreat? So that is a, the board retreat, or, or, you know, I just want to make sure that we're not getting our, back and painting ourselves in a corner with special call meeting versus having it like at a retreat or something else?
And I see your point. I was going to say, I think a retreat is a special called meeting, as I think that a workshop is too.
Yeah, so, um, could it be special call meeting, board retreat, or workshop? Would you be amenable to that language to make sure that we don't have any issues with it?
You know, I'm, I'm fine with you just to strike it, that's fine.
Okay, so we'll leave it as is. All right, other comments from board members on this one? All right, we will now move on to the draft agenda items for October 11th. Yes, sir. Dr. Davis and Dr. Franklin?
Uh, regarding the following the evaluation, is that, is there a motion made to strike following the evaluation?
No, sir, it was determined we were going to leave it.
You're going to leave that part here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so as is.
All right, so the draft evalu, or draft agenda items, Dr. Davis?
Dear Mr. Chair, members of the board, you see before you the draft agenda items for the October 11th, 2022's regular scheduled board meeting. We'll call the board meeting to order at 5:30, but we will ask for a motion to go into executive session. Currently on the draft agenda, we have executive session items as student appeals only. Um, we will have our, we'll come out of the executive session and have our inspirational moment, and then ask for the approval of the agenda, followed by the approval of our consent agenda. We'll have our first public participation opportunity, followed by voting on executive session items, which right now consists of student appeals, unfinished business action requested. We're going to ask for approval of policy IHD Adult Community Education and policy BAA, Board Self-Evaluation. This will be followed by new business, no action requested, which will be the Richland Two highlights and the approval, um, approval of policy revisions for BK Board Membership. This is a, I think this is a mistake, Mr. Manning, with members of the board. This is new, new business, no action requested, but we're asking for the approval of this policy revision. Uh, and, um, so I'm a little, I'm a little.
I think it has to go for first reading, because we haven't, um, I think we mentioned that we wanted to look at it during the board retreat, but, or the, uh, the board retreat, but I think it has to come up for first reading, right?
So it will be, it will be the first reading of these policies, BK and BID. I apologize for that, so it's still no action requested, but it's not, it's not for approval. Those will be the, the considerations for those policies. We'll have our draft agenda items for October 25th. We'll have the draft, and then approval of those draft agenda items, followed by board participate, I'm sorry, by public participation, board superintendent comments. We'll have our second executive session if needed, and if there's a voting item, we'll have that. If not, we'll go from board and superintendent comments to adjournment.
All right, board members, questions or comments?
So questions, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, Ms. Agostini and then Ms. Mackey?
Yes, I'd like to ask or make, I, I move that we remove item 9.2, policy, well, it's supposed to be the introduction, but policy BK, and item 9.3, policy revision BID. We remove them from the October 11th, 2022 agenda.
All right, motion made by Ms. Agostini, do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Scott, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Again, these are issues or policies that I think would be better served if we just hold off and wait until, um, November or December, when we have at least three new people joining this board to make this decision.
All right, motions were made, seconded, any other discussion? All right, Christine, let me know when you're ready for the vote. And we can do it electronically? It's, uh, the items are 9.8, um, 9.2, the policy revision for policy BK, and 9.3, the policy revision for policy BID. Ms. Agostini, you're fine with it as it's written up there?
That's fine.
All right, with that, we'll take the vote. Motion fails, three yes, four no. Any other, uh, comments on the draft agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Mackey?
I move to approve the draft agenda items for the October 11th, 2022 regular board meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Mackey, seconded by Dr. Holmes, any other discussion?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden?
I was trying to, um, ask, um, if we could add a discussion about the booster club and the athletic participation fees, um, some sort of presentation. We've got several, um, emails concerning the booster clubs and how they operate and the requirement based on being an athlete in the school. I guess, and I, part of it I found was under policy JJ Student Activities, so if we could add that on the agenda for a discussion, and also, you know, taking consideration of the emails that we've been receiving about the booster clubs.
She says a point of information, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The school district is separate from booster clubs. We don't, we have no jurisdiction over booster clubs in our school district.
I understand that completely, that's why I would like to have a discussion about it, because, um, in a lot of sporting activities, it's a requirement for students to join the booster club and pay the booster club fee, along with the district ordered athletic participation fee, in order for students to participate in the sport that's for the district. It is a requirement from booster club to, for parents to join that, and that's what the emails are about, and I like that you said that, because that is the very purpose of the reason why we need to have a discussion about this.
That can be addressed administratively with the parent and the booster club. The school district has no jurisdiction or authority over a booster club. If there's any impropriety or anything, issues with the booster club, that's between the parent association and the booster club, but we do not get in the middle of booster club issues. So we will address that issue from the email that was sent to us regarding that one particular school.
I think it's at several different schools, um, from what I've heard and from what I've seen, and the issue is, is that there is a tie-in, so you're saying that it's not district responsibility, and the district has nothing to do with it, but the booster club is saying, yes, they're on a district team, and it needs to be addressed because there's all kind of extra things that are happening that we need to have a discussion about it somehow, some way. Um, I mean, to, to say that it's not a district issue, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I think this person and these people have went through the proper protocols, and there's still, it's still a problem, and we need to address it, because the booster club is being tied to a district.
I would like to, Ms. McFadden, I would like to ask that you first address that issue with Dr. Davis from administration, uh, level before we put it on the board as an agenda. I think that's something that could possibly be resolved without a, a full board discussion and administrative.
Well, we have, and that's why we still get emails.
Just as a, the board has no, there's no policy that governs the oversight of booster clubs in board policy, because the school district doesn't over, there's no school, the school doesn't have oversight over booster clubs. I understand what the parent is saying, but what is being said and what is actually the case are two different things. This has been an issue with booster clubs since booster clubs have been created in a school district. It's no different that we don't have any oversight over, over foundations that support schools. We do not have any oversight of those booster clubs. Um, our staffs and are not supposed to be dealing and working along with, with money or anything related to those booster clubs and the concerns that those booster clubs have. Those are all internal matters that must be dealt with, with the booster club.
However, students cannot be a part of the team if they're not on, if they don't participate in the booster club.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that. I've never seen that.
I'm going to call point of order here with the chair. This is, this is, we can't take action on anything right now. This is not an item on our agenda for discussion. Again, I'm going to refer this to Dr. Davis to handle outside of a, a, agenda item. So I have a motion from Ms. Mackey, a second from Dr. Holmes, and at this time, we're going to take the vote.
I would like to discuss this further, because.
Ms. McFadden, we, we don't, we can't discuss it, it's not an agenda item, it's not up for discussion.
I'm asking for it to be put on the agenda.
I understand, and I've asked you to work with Dr. Davis on it because it's not a board issue.
I think it is.
There's no further, I'm, I'm not going to take any further discussion on this. This is, that, that's the, that's where we are.
So what is, what are the next steps?
What we're going to, the next steps are, is I asked you to work with Dr. Davis on this issue.
We have been.
For the particular emails that, that have been sent out.
But they haven't been resolved, and he even said it's been years since this has been going on. At what point does it get resolved? I'm just asking a question.
I'm calling the vote for.
He said it's been going on for years. At what point do we stop being years?
Christine, please pop up the vote for us.
And we address this situation?
Ms. McFadden, I explained to you already that this needs to be addressed with Dr. Davis. It's a four yes, three no vote. Uh, public participation, we have no further public participation. We'll now move on to board and superintendent comments. I'll start with Dr. Scott.
We'd like to say thank you to, um, the ladies who came from Medical University of South Carolina, who work with the students with disability. I too have had the opportunity to go and visit and watch those students, and it's a great opportunity for students to give them an opportunity to gain employment as well as, um, money to pay. So I, I'm so excited about this program. I'm glad that we are going to continue that, and I look forward to coming out to visit even more. Just excitement on a student's face to see that their, um, skill sets are being utilized, so I do appreciate that. I know we had someone earlier to speak, actually, Cabrina Baz from the Mittlands Mediation Center, and although I don't know her personally, I'm on her mailing list, so I look forward to, um, getting an opportunity to talk more with you about your conflict resolutions and some things that you actually could bring to the district that could enhance the districts. Um, and then next, I would like to say thank you to Will Anderson and his team, because we have had major concerns about where we're going with safety, and especially since the, um, committee was eliminated. I do appreciate the fact that you came here, and I think you probably eased the mind of many of our parents and our community and stakeholders, so thank you for giving that detailed report, and I do look forward to that being able to, um, be placed on the website for those who may not have the opportunity to watch us live, that they can go to the website and see what we're doing and what we're going to continue to do. Would like to say congratulations to the Longleaf Middle School, Ms. Tracy Mason, who was named District Teacher of the Year for 2022, 2023. I don't know Ms. Mason, but one of my former colleagues, Chow, was actually in her class, and all I've ever heard was just outstanding things about her, so I look forward to getting an opportunity to meet Mrs. Mason and to work closely with her. And again, thank you for, um, those who are here this evening and those who are watching. I would say to our parents, thank you for always keeping us abreast, well, keeping me abreast of things that's going on in the schools, because sometimes we are the last to hear about things and to know, so continue to utilize my social media page, continue to call me or email me. As I stated before, I've been on this board for 10 years, and I've been a parent advocate. I've been an advocate for teachers and for the community, and I will continue to do that. I will also be, um, an advocate for doing what's right, for being transparent, and although many times you may see that I'm not in the majority with my votes, but just understand, I may not be in the majority with my votes, but I'm in the majority with my voice, and I will continue to be a voice for all of you. Thank you so much, and have a wonderful evening.
Ms. McFadden?
I would say thank you to everybody, I don't think the mic is on. I would like to say thank you to everyone who comes out and who watches, um, thank you for your support, thank you for everything that you do, for letting us know what is and what isn't, and what you would like for us to speak about. A lot of the things that I, um, bring forth to the board isn't necessarily something that I've thought about, but it's something that someone has emailed me about. It's my responsibility as a representative of all of Richland School District Two, student, parents, faculty, staff, that I bring all concerns and address them, you know, appropriately, adequately, and effectively for all people. Um, doesn't necessarily mean that I agree with it, but it means that I'm a voice for everyone, not just some people. Um, so sometimes, you know, you may say that, well, why is she saying that? Did she vote different, da, 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 but I'm. But I'm bringing the information for, from anyone who emails me. So that's just my job and role on this board. Thank you for allowing me to do it. Y'all have a good night.
Ms. Agostini?
Great night.
Dr. Caution Parker?
I would just like to say thank you for the inspirational moment that was presented this evening. I was very impressed with that. That was fantastic. Dr. Davis, I want to thank you for the Back to School Report this evening and the highlights you presented. Everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just echoing the sentiments regarding the project search presentation. It was insightful. I learned some things I didn't know. Hope that our kids, our students and teachers are off to a positive, productive school year. As always, everyone who chooses to be here and continues to come to our meetings, especially staying to the end, thank you for your time. Those who watch online, thank you. And to our staff members, not just our teachers, not just our principals or bus drivers and employees, but the executive staff members who are here and stay long, whose day starts way earlier than my day starts, and you're here way longer than most of us. I appreciate your being here, those who've got to be here. We have a lane that we operate within as board members. We have directives that we are to take. We're not here to deal with anyone or chastise anyone. We have employees in this district, not property. We don't chastise or chide or talk down to anyone. So probably good for us to examine the plank in our own eyes before you try to take the speck out of someone else's with regard to behavior. We don't have a policy with regard to anyone's facial expressions or anything of that nature. And again, we probably should think about planks in our own eyes. But thank you for being here. Bless you all. Have a wonderful evening.
Dr. Holmes?
All the sentiments of thank you have been given, but in one additional sentiment, thank you for allowing us to do the ribbon cutting today on our new art center. I think that's very important. I'm a big, big supporter of the arts. Actually, my son is actually a singer and songwriter himself, so I have always supported the arts for a while. I'd also like to say to our faculty and staff, you are very much appreciated. You sit through these board meetings just like we do. And we, I understand that there's no perfect person on the board or either with the faculty and staff, but I wanted to say personally to you all, thank you, and you are definitely appreciated. To all our students, staff, and faculty, and the general public, you're appreciated also. And that's why I really appreciate the port that Will Anderson gave tonight, and thank you for using my suggestion by putting on the web, because I do know that that has been a big concern in the community, and we want to make sure that all parents are informed. And Dr. Davis, thank you for your leadership through all of this. You are appreciated also. And with that, you all have a great evening.
Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Manning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. One of my favorite quotes around leadership is that leaders become great not because of their power, but because of their ability to empower others. And I want to take an opportunity to thank my team, as always, for the work that they do. The presentations that we put together are always a collaborative effort. We communicate and share information and strategies around major issues within our school district, and we are always facing big challenges and major decisions, whether it's safety and security, whether it's, whether or not we're going to be open on school on Friday because of the weather, whether it's dealing with buses arriving to school on time. There is always an existential crisis. Some are manufactured, and some are actually real. But as a team, we work together to decipher between the manufactured ones and the real ones and address them appropriately to ensure that our students are receiving a premier educational experience. So I say thank you to my team, because they're often unsung heroes behind the scenes, making it happen for everyone. Thank you to the teachers who continue to show up each and every day and make sure that our students are receiving a premier educational experience, regardless of anything that may be prohibiting those things from happening. They come to work, and they're committed to our school district. We have a 95%, 96% fill rate in our school district, and we're continuing to work to fill those vacancies. So thank you to those who decided to make Richland Two your homes, and thank you to our parents who continue to support the efforts and the work that we do that decided to work collaboratively with administration and be advocates and not adversaries of the work that we're doing. We're thankful for you, because you make our jobs easier. So I want to especially shout out to our Parent Advisory Council. It's one of the best parent advisory council meetings we've had in several years. A bunch of energetic parents who are really committed to making this the very best place for their students. And thank you to my student advisory council members. I had a chance to meet with them as well, who were very energetic and engaged in making this the best place for students to learn. And so with those individuals in place, I just want to say that we truly appreciate you. This week was HR Appreciation Week, I believe. So thank you to our HR staff for all the work that you do in making sure that we are functioning as effectively and efficiently as possible, and always to our board, thank you for your support of administration and allowing us the latitude to make those tough decisions that allow us to function at a high level. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Yeah, I also want to comment, it's interesting how we apply our First Amendment rights to express ourselves. But with that, if I can have a motion to adjourn?
To Chair, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? Everyone in favor, raise your right hand high. Unanimous, we're adjourned.